All right, let's call the meeting to order. Debra, would you call the roll?
Certainly. Mayor Bry Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Al Britton.
Present.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand up for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, folks, we're going to start off tonight's meeting with a proclamation. Whoops, sorry.
Okay. Hopefully you can hear me better. We're going to start off with a proclamation. This is the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Week. So, and that's from May 4th through 10th. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all, and whereas the municipal professional clerk serves as the informational center on the functions of local government and community, and whereas the professional municipal clerks continue to strive towards improving the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk throughout participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk, now therefore be proclaimed by the Town Council of Southwest Ranches the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend our appreciation to our town clerk's office and to all the professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we, I have a proclamation here. Do we want to get a picture?
Okay.
Do we have to do a picture?
Let's get a picture. Come on, Dan. You know, Russell, it's an old tradition during Clerk's Week, the town administrator's supposed to buy them lunch every day. So I'm sure you won't let them down.
Trying to keep them lean and mean.
All right.
Vice Mayor, I thought it was breakfast and lunch.
Sorry?
I thought it was breakfast and lunch.
Breakfast and lunch? I missed that. I just caught the lunch part. All right, very good. All right, do we have anybody signed up for public comment this evening?
Yes, Vice Mayor, we have four. If anyone else wishes to speak, we need your cards now. If not, you waive the ability to speak during public comment. Seeing one other, well, we have five, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm going to call them out in order in which we receive the cards. And I apologize, I can't read the last name. It's Hassan. Chibley, sorry. Followed by Mary Michelle, followed by Amna Lane.
Thank you. May I begin?
Each speaker has three minutes.
You have three minutes to speak. If you have any questions, the rules of the quorum are on the podium. And the time will start when you begin.
Thank you. My name is Attorney Hassan Chibley, and I was retained by Ms. Mary Michelle, and I'd like to address the county attorney, the town attorney here. My concern is in regards to what makes America truly great, and that is the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and the Bill of Rights and freedom of assembly and freedom of speech. Now, I understand this town has passed a resolution unequivocally supporting Israel despite the facts that, well, again, this is my understanding, and I'm happy to hear back from you on that, because we've witnessed Israel now kill tens of thousands of civilians every single day. I see pictures of children that are killed, and we pray for peace. We want peace and justice for humanity. But the concerns are that I heard that my client was denied her ability to speak at a meeting here last year. She was forcibly removed. And my concern as an American citizen is that perhaps in order to censor Americans and to protect a foreign nation, sometimes we're giving up freedom and liberties here at home. And I think what makes America great is the U.S. Constitution. I am a Syrian-American. I immigrated from Syria when I was four years old. My parents chose to make America our home. My parents are doctors. I'm an attorney. I run a successful practice. We chose to make America our home because it gives freedom of speech, freedom of assembly for all Americans. That's the heart and soul of this country, and we cannot sacrifice those principles to protect a foreign nation. So I just urge this county to do all it can to allow all viewpoints to be expressed, even if those viewpoints are maybe ones that you disagree with, because that's ultimately what makes America great. Our enemies can never destroy us. We can only destroy ourselves if we sacrifice things like freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, you know? That's the heart and soul of America. And right now, as an attorney, I'm witnessing many incidents where Americans' ability to speak out is being curtailed to protect Israel, and that scares me. We got to keep America first, keep our tax dollars at home, promote peace in the world, and never, ever undermine freedom of speech for Americans here at home, whether we like that speech or hate that speech. The fact that we have freedom of speech is what makes America great. Let's keep America great. Thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you. Mary Michelle, followed by Amna.
Mary Michelle, 15011 North Saxon Circle. An injustice for one is an injustice for all. Freedom of speech and protecting our Constitution, the very concepts imbued in our Constitution, are not intended for the select few who hold power at any particular time. They are intended to protect civil liberties and freedom for all. When autocrats, petty or otherwise, decide to take power into their own hands and impose restrictions to said freedoms, we all speak out in one voice. It matters not whether you agree with what is being said. As an American citizen, and particularly an elected official, you are bound by the laws of this land, the Constitution, and to uphold the right to free speech and assembly. Public servants such as police officers are also bound by the oath that they took to uphold and defend the Constitution. On all counts, this town and the police force failed to do so. Rather, they took instructions from the mayor and the city council to impose arbitrary restrictions on freedom of speech and assembly knowingly and admittedly violating the very tenets of the Constitution. My father joined the Marines at the age of 17 and stood atop Mount Saribachi on Iwo Jima for the raising of the first flag. My grandfather fought in World War I. Growing up, I had the honor and the privilege of knowing two Congressional Medal of Honor recipients, as well as many 4th Marine Division heroes. These men left a deep impression on my soul. I loathe all cowards who are so afraid of political repercussions as to sell our country to a foreign government when these men, and many before them, were willing to give their lives. Shame on you. Unequivocal support of Israel, a foreign nation, is treason, and God willing, you will be held accountable for the innocent lives you took in the abdication of the defense of the Constitution in favor of a rogue and apartheid state, an invasive and parasitic power that has internally invaded our foreign and domestic policy for decades. At this time, the very rights of American citizens are under attack due to the convoluted propaganda of AIPAC and the Israeli lobby, which equates Israel, a foreign nation, and Zionism, a political ideology, with Judaism, a religion which has existed for millennia. As we see the onslaught of the rise of fascism in this nation and the erosion of our civil rights, we must decide if we will hold the line, as our forefathers did, or capitulate to fear, lies, and propaganda. Thank you.
Thank you. Amna, followed by Krishna, followed by Debbie Green.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'm going to start by saying this. I can honestly say.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Yeah. I'm going to start by saying this. I can honestly say that you are all hypocrites to your oath and pledge of allegiance. You say you pledge allegiance to, under one God, you say, under one God, with justice and liberty for all. How is supporting a genocide, is justice and liberty for the people of Gaza? I'll let you ponder on that. I have a message, just a general statement about the implications of supporting a genocide. This genocide is a betrayal of our democracy, our morality, and our humanity. Many of us have become disillusioned, having believed in international law as a means of keeping us safe and protecting everyone's rights. But this genocide in Gaza has made it very clear, international law is only a weapon used against weaker nations, but it has no effect on the powerful nations who are the biggest violators of human rights and war crimes. This genocide against Gaza has made it very clear that none of us are safe. We can all become victims of violence if it is politically expedient. Unfortunately, the U.S. government is not thinking ahead, because we feel very powerful and untouchable with our nuclear weapons and massive weapons. However, we know from history, empires come and go. America is no different. It's no different. Once there's a power shift, those who are more powerful will do to us what we did to them. People will treat you the way you treat them. When we violate other people's rights, we can expect our rights to be violated. The only way to keep everyone safe is to respect the law and international law. Unless we do that, we will be victims of our own crimes and actions. Our safety will always lie in the safety of others and not in our powers and weapons. The genocide in Gaza is a reflection of our complete political and moral failures. We have nothing to gain from supporting a genocide and everything to lose. Once we no longer respect the rights and safety of others, we lose ours. There is no telling what others might do to us because of what we did to them. The genocide in Gaza must be stopped immediately. Everyone of us has a moral obligation to do everything we can to stop this crime. This crime is happening on our watch. Our silence is a moral crime, and it endangers all of us. The consequences of our silence is more genocide. With our silence, we make violence the norm and peace the enemy. Everyone must speak up and ask their local and federal government to do everything they can to stop this genocide. Thank you.
Krishna, followed by Debbie. And Debbie, you're the final speaker after Krishna.
Good evening. My name is Krishna Madan. I'm a retired history teacher and a U.S. Army veteran. Witch sees the witch. We know about the great injustices perpetrated by such false accusations in Salem, but today, that scapegoat word, witch, has been replaced by antisemite. In 1642, we shut you up by calling you a witch. Today, we shut you up by calling you antisemite. You say that babies should not be killed by bombs, drones, and starvation? Be quiet. You're an antisemite. You say that the town of Southwest Ranches should retract its resolution that gives Israel a blank check to commit genocide? Shut up. You're an antisemite. Professor John Mearsheimer is the emeritus professor of political science at the University of Chicago. He's acknowledged to be the top political scientist in the U.S. and a conservative. Just last month, Professor Mearsheimer said that the greatest threat to free speech in our country comes from supporters of Israel who suppress criticism of Israel. Like Amnesty International and Human Rights Watch, Mearsheimer has assessed Israel to be an apartheid state engaged in genocide. The blanket and unqualified support that this town has given to Israel in its resolution makes you all complicit in such apartheid and genocide. It makes the town complicit in Israel's violations of international law and its extensive war crimes as it prosecutes the war against the people of Gaza. The excuse that if Hamas surrenders, Israel would stop the killing amounts to an endorsement of state terrorism. You are declaring, "We have the right to bomb, shoot, and starve your civilians until you surrender." Well, my friends, that is precisely what terrorism is, deliberate crimes against civilians perpetrated for a political objective. And speaking of terrorism, Pope Francis, whom we all are still mourning, said this about Israel's actions. This is not war. This is terrorism. That was Pope Francis speaking of what Israel is doing. So unless this town council wants to go down in history as a supporter of terrorism, apartheid, and genocide, it needs to retract its blanket, open-ended support of Israel. As a veteran, we did not serve to see criticism of Israel suppressed and our country actively engaged in such abominations. As a history teacher, I know how history will view this city unless it honestly reassesses Israel's war on the people of Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie, final speaker.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 19. Well, I came here actually to speak about, I just wanted to make everyone aware that a good friend of mine is recently a victim of identity theft and fraudulent land sale right here in Southwest Ranches. It's a vacant lot, has no mortgage on it, so, you know, just everyone should just be very aware. It actually got caught right at closing because something started being fishy with the buyer. And my friend did not go to the closing. The, they were trying to then, I think, close somehow other than in person. The realtor started thinking something was fishy, so he actually went to my friend's house, because he lives not far in Fort Lauderdale, and found out that, no, she wasn't selling her property. He had all the identification. The person had a fake driver's license with her, you know, her information and all of that. So, I mean, everyone just needs to, it's just kind of, now you see how much it is out there, that it happened to me and someone else in my small little world in this year. So we just all need to be careful, and just that it's in Southwest Ranches. I just, I guess I feel the need to just say, the resolution was condemning a terrorist act by a terrorist organization. This town has afforded everyone their freedom of speech. They have gone above and beyond in allowing everyone their freedom of speech, their three minutes to speak, everybody, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. The only time someone was asked to be removed was at the start of the meeting, when they disrupted the pledge of allegiance and the start of a meeting, where it was not the time to speak. So had they been able to hold it, they would have had their three minutes at public comment. But again, I applaud you all, because you all have afforded everybody, whether you believe, whether you agree or not, have afforded everybody their right to free speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's the final comment. We're on to board reports. All right, any board reports this evening? Looks like none.
I guess on behalf of the Education Advisory Board, just want to remind everybody that the scholarships are coming due, the applications are due the end of May, so make sure you have all your hours in and get those applications done. There may be a few more opportunities if you need some hours, and please reach Debra at Town Hall. And I guess we, I wasn't at the last Town Council meeting, but I'm sure Gary and y'all did, but we had a fantastic 5K, and I believe it was $7,000 that was raised from that.
Yep.
And then on the Zero Waste Advisory Board.
Yep.
I just want to make sure everyone's aware that we have a WM tour scheduled for April 30th. I think we're getting a pretty good response right now, but I believe there's still open spaces, so anyone that's interested in joining, to please reach out to Dan in Town Hall. It's kind of incredible, once you actually go on one of these tours and you actually see how things are being sorted and recycled, and it just brings a whole new light, and you bring that back to your friends and neighbors, where people are questioning, are things really recycled and that? So just thank you.
Debbie, what time is it at?
I think it's 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM at the.
At the Ruder.
Ruder Recycling off of US 27.
On US 27.
Pembroke Road.
Pembroke Road. Correct.
Three spots left.
Put me down for one. Good. Okay. Thank you. All right. Councilmember comments?
Yeah, I'll go first. Give it 30 seconds here.
Sure.
The buzzers should stop. And now on a more mundane front, just a few items of note that I'd like to go. First off, thank everybody for coming, especially thanks to Davie Police Department for being here. We really do appreciate your efforts, so, big shout out to that. We have Hazmat at the Barn coming up on May 3rd from 10:00 to 2:00. It's going to include prescription drug drop-off, recycling, and paper shredding for residents. So everybody be prepared for that. BCPA will be here on the first Tuesday of the month, which is from 10:00 to 12:00 here at Town Hall. So if you have any questions or anything regarding your homestead extension or ag, please show up for that. Our big 25th birthday party is at the barn on June 7th, and it starts at 10:00 AM with a parade and ends, I have no idea when, but it's going to be a lot of fun with a lot of rides and great barbecue coming, and it's all free to the residents of our town. So hopefully we'll see everybody there. The DMV Flowmobile for May will not be here. It is tasked with being somewhere else, so I just want to make a general announcement about that. And the last thing I want to put down is something I'd like to, I'm not going to, for discussion for the next meeting when the mayor's here, and that deals with our party permits. I think we've, we were missing something in the requirements for the party permits, and I think I may have a possible solution for it that would help Davie Police enforce it, because right now, anybody that pulls a party permit basically has carte blanche. They could have 5,000-watt system going, DJ live bands, whatever, and just shatter windows a mile away if they so desired. And I think we need to address that. I think it's something that we didn't think of at the time that was going to happen, even though there's time restrictions on it and all that, but it does impede on neighbors blocks and blocks away, up to a mile away in some cases. And so I think, I want to bring that up as a discussion item, Russell, on the next May meeting, you know, and go for there. And I think I have a couple of suggestions, you know, that may or may not work. I've talked to a few people, including Mr. Spitzer, who's a retired scientist on sound systems and all that. And I'll close with that, Mayor, Vice Mayor, sorry.
Thank you, Gary.
Oh, and Steve, thanks. Hopefully we'll see you soon.
Gary. Gary, I agree with you 100%. I'm going to go back to December 23, when there was a wedding in my neighborhood, right down the street from me, and the music was so loud. There was all kinds of dignitaries at this wedding, including Marco Rubio, all kinds of highly influential people were at this wedding, and the music, you could hear it miles away. And this part wedding was located at Holte and Sterling, and I had residents at Hancock and Lou Ray saying they can hear it clear as can be. That's how far we, that's how loud that music was, and I think something, I agree with you, something should be done to quash the loudness that was kind of missed out of this. But, you know, we go back and we fix things. Now, I'm going to begin with, next week at Sunshine Ranches HOA, you know, we received a lot of these speeding reports from these signs that track how fast the vehicles are going, and it's looking like over half of the cars on these roads are still speeding. Over half of the cars that are picked up are speeding. We've had speeding as fast as 92 miles an hour on an interior road. This is inexcusable, intolerable. I mean, how is somebody going to slow down going that fast if an animal's in the road? That animal is gone.
So is the person.
And a person, of course, of course. People can jump out of the way, but, and then, yeah, that's inexcusable as well, but yes, the, all right.
Sorry to interrupt you.
All right. The speeding is inexcusable, and Rod, our town engineer, is going to do a presentation at the HOA meeting. It's open to all, just log on to the Zoom, and he's going to do a presentation about a possible alternative to resolve the speeding called speed tables. And it's something I'm kind of intrigued by. I would like to get more information about it to see if it would be applicable in our neighborhood, but something really has to be done with the speeding. As I was walking my dogs this afternoon, I saw cars speeding on Lou Ray. One of them blew the stop sign going from west to east. It barely slowed down, went through the stop sign. And yes, nothing's going to stop speeders from running the stop sign, but the speeding really needs to be controlled. And my final issue is, the speakers that came up here tonight, you know, I want, first of all, I want to thank them for coming and voicing. That's the thing about America, is the First Amendment, you can speak your mind. Nobody made a single derogatory word. Nobody said hate speech. And I support a person's right to speak their opinion, even if it is unpopular. That's the purpose of the First Amendment. Unpopular speech is protected. What I want, I fight to protect is hate speech. And I don't care if the hate speech is against Hispanics, Jews, Muslims, and white supremacist groups. The hate speech is inexcusable and should not be protected. But as the resolution that I still say was, I still support it. It didn't attack anybody. It doesn't say anybody's speech is limited, and I honestly do not believe that if we were to rescind this resolution, all the violence would end. It won't. So that concludes my comments.
Jim?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Real quick, I have one subject tonight. I'd like to speak a little bit about Ms. Debbie Green's presentation there from the school board and the scholarships. I was very honored to attend the Borough League of Cities Scholarship Award Ceremony. They had 30 applicants, and I think there were 23 that had the application spelled out correctly. They went through those, they chose the top 10, they interviewed the top 10, and they gave out four scholarships to deserving, and they were well-deserving young students that were there. Each one had a chance to speak, and you can see that our future is bright with them. They gave out four $2,500 scholarships. Now, that seems like a lot to a lot of people. The town of Southwest Ranches gives out over 20, or has for the past couple of years, over 20 $2,000 or better scholarships. Now, think about that just for a minute. We've been doing that year after year after year. So you really do have to say congratulations to our School and Education Board, okay?
Shit, sorry.
I like that out of him better.
That's my pet parrot that's talking, that's all. I got a parrot. But our scholarship group, our board is doing one excellent job. I also found out there's a bunch of organizations in Browery County that give out scholarships. So if you're a senior in high school or in college or looking, don't just settle for one or so. Look around. There are a bunch of them out there, and a lot of them never get distributed, because there's no applicants. there's no applicants, and that really is a shame. So if you're a student, or if you are one of the students and you're looking for scholarship, look all over. Broward County has a bunch of them out there, and thank you, Ms. Debbie, for the school board's part in it, all right? That's all I got, Mayor.
All righty. Mayor, any comments?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it. Just a couple of comments. I wanted to say, first, I'm looking forward to hearing some of the comments on the sound. That continues to be an issue, and always looking to make improvements. So, thanks, Gary, for doing the work on that, and I'm looking forward to hearing what those ideas are and seeing how we can improve. So that's great. I did want to give a quick update for the South Florida Wildlife Center. Appreciate Russell's work in contacting the school board and getting some dates back from them on where they're at and really kind of the tasks that they're working on. They are working on a lot of different elements of it to bring it all together, and at this point, they're anticipating that this will come before the school board, the lease itself will come before the school board for approval in July. So that's great news, really moving that forward, and I think that's just going to be a fantastic addition to our town. Once that is approved, then we will have a final agreement that we'll all need to approve. And when I say "all," we'll be talking about the town, we'll be talking about South Florida Wildlife Center, and we'll be talking about the school board. And the county also needs to weigh in on that as well, just to make sure they're good with it and make sure they'll give an extension to South Florida Wildlife Center. So, but basically, good news in that area. Appreciate Russell, your work on that, and really appreciate Keith. I know you've done a lot to move that along as well, so that's good, all good news. And finally, I'm, just a quick note, that I'm just a few days away from being back home, and we've had a great time and appreciate the ability to take this time off, and, but look, very much, at this point, very much looking forward to getting back home and getting back to work and doing a lot of the things that we used to do. So, thank you for that, and thank you to everybody who's done such a great job in my absence.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I, for one, will be happy to see you back here. You make this job look easy, and I certainly appreciate the job you do when you're running these meetings. I also wanted to make a comment about the people that were out this evening discussing their First Amendment rights. I truly believe that that is probably the cornerstone of our country, the ability to speak the truth in public and have no retribution for it. I heard Mr. Sibley say that he heard, it sounds like he's been led to believe. I was going to suggest that he gets a copy of the resolution from the clerk and make him aware also that the incidents that, I don't know what the claim is, but the incidents that are being portrayed are all on YouTube, which is a wonderful thing. It's part of the world of sunshine we have here in Florida. It's kind of an added benefit. What people are not realizing is there were a number of protests that took place in the room here that were disruptive, and that's, you know, where people were asked to leave because they were disrupting the meeting. You have a right to peaceably assemble, you have a right to peacefully protest, you don't have a right to disrupt meetings and create problems, and that's more or less what went on. Well, that's my opinion of what went on. Past that, Russell, I wanted to talk to you about the Flowmobile, and we could probably talk about this during our meeting, but I've learned that a lot of our residents really rely on the Flowmobile, and there's really two issues. One is, when it's canceled, if your birthday is in June, you're in trouble, because the county also requires appointments to get your, to renew your license, and there's nothing available till July. I don't know if we could get them here more frequently or never miss a month, but I'm hearing from somebody near and dear to my heart, whose birthday is June.
I can address that when my comments come up.
Okay. Let's see, those, oh, back on scholarship, Jim, you brought up an important point. You know, my daughter just graduated in December, and not only did she work to get the scholarship here in town while she was in school, but she was actually the recipient of a whole bunch of scholarships. If you're part of a union, or a professional association, or a trade association, many of them have scholarships. When your kids are in school, my daughter was part of the International Business Honor Society, they gave scholarships every year to travel to India. Pretty impressive trips, pretty impressive scholarships. My daughter was constantly in search of, for either to offset her tuition or to provide these additional educational opportunities, and throughout her four years in school, two of them were in the pandemic, but the last two, I mean, you couldn't hold her down. She won a bunch of scholarships and did a great job at that. So, if your college student is aggressive about it, you really ought to encourage them to be aggressive, because it's not just about money. Like I said, two years in a row, she got a trip to India on the Honor Society. So I'd encourage you to encourage your grandchildren, your children, whoever it is you have in your family in college, to really do the research, because to leave that money on the table is a shame. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you, folks. Legal?
On October 7th, 2024, the 23, 23, the state of Israel had a brutal terrorist attack. The town council shortly thereafter passed a resolution supporting the people of Israel against terrorism and denouncing the terrorist attack. I only wish that those who came to our meeting actually read the resolution prior to speaking about a resolution that they've never read. And when you have a member of the Florida bar coming forward and speaking about it, and then admitting that he never read it when he was questioned, is suspect at best. Debbie said it aptly when she mentioned the fact that, yes, we allow everyone to have their three minutes to speak. When they speak with respect about any comment, we've never stopped them. But when someone starts screaming in the middle of a town meeting, when we're doing the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the town council absolutely had the right to remove that individual who was being completely disruptive in the middle of a town meeting. So, like always, we welcome our friends from whatever nations they believe in or religions they believe in to come and speak and, you know, have their three minutes. But to threaten the town with a First Amendment lawsuit in this town that especially gives, you know, deference to everyone is insane, and I hope prior to them coming back, they actually take the time to read the item that they came to speak out about today. Other than that, no further legal comments.
Russell?
Just a few comments, Vice Mayor. First and foremost, I will ask for council support on an item. So, back in December of 2024, the town council approved the resolution to award a contract for a drainage project at 49th, Southwest 49th and 202nd Avenue. The project has been completed, but due to site conditions which are unforeseen when they're excavating and handling this drainage project, there were some pre-routes that complicated the work that was there. So, the amount that was awarded was $39,000. That was in the resolution. The actual project cost, because of the site conditions that they had to encounter and deal with, amounted to about $41, so there's a $2,486 difference. I'm asking the town council to just approve that difference in price to allow us to pay the contractor for the additional work.
Do you need a motion on that?
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, council members, I'd like to make a motion that we procure the funds from the For Return Lean Fund. That way, there'll be no impact on the taxpayers.
Second.
A minimal amount, $2,000.
Good. So we have a motion and a second? Any discussion amongst the council?
No.
No? Public discussion? Just want to make a quick comment. We're paying an extra $2,000-plus. Now, we have ordinances that we turn a blind eye to on planting trees in the swales, and that's essentially what we have here. Folks, FPNL is out trimming trees in the swales right now. We have to pay extra on our contracts when people plant particularly oak trees, which get huge. The ones I've got in my yard, I planted as sticks back 30 years ago, and some of them are a foot and a half in diameter now. They get huge. The point I'm trying to make is, this consequence is to planting trees right down underneath the power wires. One is the power wires, and two is when we do our drainage projects around town, the trees that don't belong there certainly get in the way, and it costs us more. So, that's my speech. Thank you. No public comment, no other council member comment? Deborah, would you put up? Deborah, come on up. Debbie?
At our last parks meeting, there was a couple, a couple gentlemen attended the meeting, sharing the importance of tree preservation, and maybe that's something that the council and the town could look at going forward, and not only the projects that residents do, but then the town projects that they're doing. What they, they're arborists, and, you know, and they know the importance of tree preservation. And when we go through and destroy trees in not the right way, where maybe today, we don't really see anything, but then five, 10 years from now, because those roots have now been damaged, or whatever the FPNL or whoever's going through, then that can create, either that tree can fall into the resident's house or onto the roadway, it can create drainage issues. So, it was interesting to me, because I never really thought about that. So, it just did seem like something that's important that the town kind of look at going forward, kind of that lead by example, is, you know, how you, how we're also, the residents are expected to follow certain things when they're doing projects, that the town also do the same when it's looking at whether it's the swales and the drainage projects and all that. Thanks.
I missed that meeting last month, or this month, actually. Yeah. Life got in the way. Maybe you guys could come up with a recommendation on what you'd like us to look at specifically? You did? Okay. Ah, okay. So that'd be helpful. Thank you, Debbie.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to reiterate on something you said. You know, I had the opportunity to attend a meeting with Rod and some of the residents in the area of Green Meadows. There's some oak trees there that are in the swell. They were planted there years ago illegally and stuff. The drainage projects that were proposed, if you move those drains, and I know it sounds crazy to people, but if you move those drains 50 foot one way or the other or so, it's not doing what the project's supposed to do, and that's protect the neighbors from flooding. I know the trees are wonderful. I know they're valuable. Ms. December and one of the other residents talked about that. But sometimes, because the trees are there and the drain has to go there, you cannot move it sometime. You know, it's a situation that's bad. So, the trees that are currently in the swales, I feel sorry that they get damaged, and hopefully we'll do a much better job not to damage them, but the drains are essential to keeping the rain out that we've had, the flooding that we've had. And Green Meadows in particular has had some bad flooding. I'm sure your neighborhoods have also. So, you know, it's not that we're deliberately tearing up the trees or hurting the trees, it's just that sometimes you have to sacrifice it for the good of the people, you know, and that's just my opinion. Thank you.
All right. Going back to Russell?
Thank you.
I think we just need to call the vote.
Councilmember Al Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bry Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All righty. Russell?
A few other items, very quickly. The Broward County City Managers Association has been working with county administration on evaluating the efficacy of the surtax program, and there have already been two amendments to the interlocal agreement with Broward County to basically, you know, administer that program and ensure that there's equal footing for all the cities to access the surtax funding. We've been working long and hard for the past several years, almost two years now, on trying to amend the surtax program to allow for what we call R&amp;M projects, which is basically an allowance of surtax funding to be used for routine maintenance. So, for instance, asphalt overlay and things of that nature. Prior to this discussion, every project that was submitted for surtax was basically a competitive grant, and you were competing against other cities and really with the goal of the county to increase mobility in urban areas and moving mass amounts of people, obviously, the council, the town would have a competitive disadvantage in that, in that respect. So we've been working, along with other cities, on advancing a change to the surtax program. I'm happy to say that the city managers and county administration have worked out a construct of a third amendment to the ILA that will designate a set amount of money that will come to every municipality for R&amp;M projects without it being basically a competitive challenge grant. What that means for the town of Southwest Ranches is that, based on models that I've seen, I'm not promising the exact numbers, but based on models that I've seen, we should expect to see about $500,000 or more every year going forward, based on that. So, it's up for the county commission to approve that version of the ILA. We will be bringing that back for the town attorney to review, to make sure it protects the town, and then we will ask the town council to approve that at a future meeting.
Bravo, Russell.
Yeah, this is fantastic. Russell, does it make sense for us to go to the commission meeting to support this, if possible?
I think, you know, this is a collaborative effort that we've been working, and it's, I think it'll be fine. Yeah, yeah.
Sorry?
It will pass the county commission. We're working on it.
Okay. Well, they have their own ideas, that's what worries me.
They were collaborative in the process, so it was joint.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
This is a joint, a joint effort. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention was the residential composting pilot program. We've been working on that. We have been working in a dual effort, one, to educate the public about the composting pilot program, where we're going to enroll the first 100 people that are interested in this program, to be able to be enrolled into it and to basically have their organics composted, and they will, one of the benefits they will receive is actually the ability to get some of this soil that's produced from the compost. We are marketing that. We are early in our marketing efforts. I want to thank Catherine for her efforts on this. She's really led the charge on this. And we are also not only marketing it to the residents and advising them of it, but also working on the procurement aspect to get a compost vendor in line. So we believe that we'll have something in place for June to start the composting pilot program, and just what we've also done is we've put something on our website, so if anyone is interested in learning more or wants to sign up as a participant in the program, there is an interest form that you can fill out on the website, and it comes to us when we're aware. There are going to be some, certain requirements for you to stick to, to be part of the program. And I'm happy to say, with limited time of marketing this information and putting it out there, that we've already got about 25 people that have expressed the interest, so. Just wanted to give you an update on that. The last thing that I had before I turn it over to someone is the flow program that you brought up. So, for those that know, we have been doing this flow program. When I first started here, started bringing that forward, we've been doing that now for several years, very successful. The flow program is an outreach of the Florida Highway Safety Division. And for those that don't know, the different counties' tax collectors will be taking over this aspect of it. So it's actually leaving the control of the state and being designated down to the county level. There's probably going to be some growing pains with that, associated with that, and basically, right now, what you're experiencing is this growing pain, because the county is being asked to take it over, the state is, and the state and the county are trying to figure out the best way to do that, and so I don't have a great answer for you as far as getting them to come out. We don't control that. The state does, and they're trying to basically get out of that business and designate it to the county. What I can tell residents, if they're interested, and those that are having birthdays in June and July, is that they can visit the Florida Highway Safety Department website. There's a meeting scheduler there that tells you where they're going to be, where the flow program is going to be over the next couple of months. There's not, it's not the best website, because it doesn't tell you every location that they're going to be in, but there's phone numbers that you can contact as well. My understanding is that they're going to have an event on May 12th in Cooper City. I don't know if there's any availability there. And then there's another one going to be in May 20th in Pembroke Pines, I believe. I'm sorry, May 12th in Pembroke Pines, May 20th in Cooper City. I had the dates confused.
They're all booked. They're all booked up.
They're all booked up.
She's been through all that already.
Yeah, all right. I'm sorry, but yeah, that's, that's all I can.
She might be going to Tallahassee to renew her driver's license.
I know Miami has appointments too, but yeah, it's just crazy all the way around.
I told her not to wait next time, twelve years from now.
Yeah. And then the last thing that I just wanted to, uh, say under my comments is that I would like to turn it over for a few minutes for Susan Cuts to come on up and speak about the birthday party and some advances and some updates that we have related to that event on June seventh. Susan, would you come up, please?
Good evening, everybody. Um, we are pretty excited about some, um, updates that I'd like to share with you.
Lot louder, please.
Good evening. Um, I'd like to share some really amazing, uh, updates with everybody, uh, for the birthday. Um, I'm pleased to announce that the Open Water, Open Water is a company that is strictly, uh, committed to sus- sustainability. And, um, we will be having them, um, at the party. And they are going to generously provide eighty cases of twelve ounces of still water for everybody. And it's just for the water, and it is in cans. Um, so we're doing away with, um, plastic water, and we're going to do this for the party. Um, and this partnership actually is perfectly aligned with our events, our, uh, this event with environmental goals. So we're very happy about that. Um, as part of the celebration, we're highlighting the recycling right initiative to encourage our community to move away from plastic water bottles in favor of more sustainable alternatives. The Open Water's aluminum cans and climate-conscious mission make them ideal partner to help us reinforce this message of environmental responsibility. On another front, final preparations for the parade are underway. We are arranging donated vehicles for the council members, um, with different companies locally, um, and for our dignitaries. And we've also submitted a request for an aviation flyover, um, which we're very excited about. I, I did do the request, and it's gone through a couple of different requests, and now we're just waiting for the FAA to approve it. So if we are lucky enough, we might be able to get it. Um, and we are also in line to have a banner and an airplane that will say happy birthday to the Town of Southwest Ranches. Um, so again, we are just waiting for the approval of the FAA, which, you know, hopefully we will get that too. Um, additionally, we are exploring the possibility of featuring a stagecoach to add to the nostalgic element of the festivities. This is absolutely, uh, I don't know if you have seen it, um, uh, in the parades for the Davy. And it's, um, it's, we'll see how that goes, and, um, but more to come soon, and we're on a great path, um, to an unforgettable community party.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank, thank you, Suzie. And I just want to rec, you know, recognize Suzie real quick because she's really been doing a yeoman's job on this. It's, if you have ever, you know, planned a wedding or a large, a large party, you know, do that times ten. That's basically what she's doing. So it's, I, I really rec, you know, commend her for her efforts on this. Thank you, Suzie.
Excellent. Great job. This is the same lady, folks, who turns out our newsletter every month. So she's used to that project management or getting things done. Thank you again.
And handles complaints for, for waste management.
Oh, yeah. If, all right. Russell?
Uh, that's, that concludes my comments, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
All righty. Let's see. There was some question on whether we were going to move forward through the resolutions. Do we want to table?
Yeah, so, uh, Vice Mayor, two council members asked me beforehand if, uh, the items that are just the renewals of the maintenance contracts, towing, et cetera, can be combined, as I said, as your prerogative. They requested that you combine nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen into one motion and one vote because they're all renewal contracts. For purposes of the record, uh, from a hundred years ago, I represent most of the towing associations in South Florida, including A Superior Towing. I've advised the town previously of the conflict. Once again, all they're doing in their contract is they're giving the town another twenty-five percent. So it's actually a, a good thing for the town.
Yeah. Do you guys have any objection to combining?
Like enough motion to do that. Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
You can make the decision.
Okay.
You run the issue.
So let's do it.
Yeah. All right, so, uh, for purposes of the, uh, record, items now nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen are, uh, going to be moved on at once. Um, you don't technically have to read them all in. It would be a lot to read in. But, uh, they're all maintenance agreements, but you can still have public comment if you want.
Do we have any public comment on these four issues? Five issues. Thank you.
It's actually six, isn't it?
Okay. It sounds like we're good.
Yep.
We would just need to motion approve items nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen on the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All righty. Any public comment? Any council comment? All right. Deborah, call the roll.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Items nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen have passed.
All right, so let's move on to item ten, which is, uh, surplus equipment.
Item ten is a resolution of the town council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, declaring specific town-owned equipment as surplus inventory, authorizing the town administrator to properly declare and to dispose of the surplus inventory, waiving all applicable procurement code provisions to the contrary, allowing the town administrator and town attorney to execute any and all documents that may be necessary to dispose of the surplus inventory and to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Any council comments?
Vice Mayor, before we approve this, I just want one quick thing. There's a, a list of surplus items that I want to bring to your attention. There are, uh, there are ten items. Essentially, they're all the same, but they're listed ten different times or separately. And they're basically, uh, spotlights that are a holdover, I guess, from the days when the town purchased them for BSO. They've been sitting in a closet for the past eleven years. Um, we thought that there was going to be surplus and toss because they weren't any good. We, and looking into it a little bit further and talking with Detective Alaska, as we realized it's something that our officers who are patrolling the streets could use, especially in the event of a hurricane. So we will, we plan on pulling those items off the list because they are operable and we want to be able to utilize them. We can utilize them.
Good.
The other thing I just wanted to bring to your attention is, uh, obviously, the item that's the biggest ticket item that will get the most revenue will be the, uh, the former attack truck that's on the list. We plan on approving tonight the authorization to go ahead and, 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 uh, surplus it, but obviously doesn't mean that we're doing it tomorrow. We'll do that when the other attack truck is a hundred percent ready to go. We're waiting on a, a light that has to be ordered for it. But other than that, everything else is good to go on the list.
Will that hold up, um, the surplus process on the rest of the items? Or will you just hold that out?
No, that's going to be separate and apart.
Okay. Very good.
So from a legal standpoint, I would just ask whoever made the motion in the second to just amend it to remove the, uh, spotlights from the list.
I, I saw, uh.
I saw approved for a second.
Yeah, a second.
Okay. We're good. Any further discussion? Did we open it up to public? I don't recall.
No, we haven't.
Okay. No public comment. All right.
This, this Sony cassette recorder is going to be a hot ticket item.
Real hot item. I was wondering if I could get the, the fire truck for fifty bucks. I might bid on that. All right. Deborah, you want to please call the roll?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't even fit in my drive.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Item passed.
Steve, you sound really good for five hundred miles off the coast of Oregon.
I'll sound a little better when I'm right there in the council chambers. Thank you for running a great meeting.
Sure, thank you. All right, uh, let's see. So that covers all of our?
One fifteen.
No, it does not.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, right. All right, Deborah, would you read fifteen?
Yes, sir. Item fifteen is a resolution of the town council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, picking back, piggybacking off the City of Dania Beach's procurement and appointing Harry Hippler Esquire of Harry Hippler, PA, as the town's alternate special magistrate, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement with Harry Hippler, PA, and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right. Uh, any council comment? Just a question. So this will only be in the case where our current magistrate has a conflict or can't make it for some reason?
Or in the case of Mr. Hippler previously, who I, I don't know, but he's written wonderful orders and highly recommended in the legal community, uh, where residents have claimed, as they did the first time he worked for us, that Mr. Garcia had a conflict. So rather than fighting with that resident, uh, Russell made the decision to, uh, bring Mr. Hippler, and he's done a phenomenal job.
Makes a lot of sense.
Very smart idea.
Yeah, yeah. Good. Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none. Uh, Deborah, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a discussion item. Uh, the I-9 Sports League at Country Estates Fishing Hole Park. Um, it's a discussion item, and Russell, would you introduce and explain?
Yeah, so basically, I'll just give you a quick overview, but, um, also December's here if there's any details needed. Essentially, we're running programming out at Country Estates Fishing Hole Park on Saturdays. Uh, programming is going well, but there has been a segment of the population that has, um, expressed interest in our current provider to offer services on Sunday because they cannot make it on Saturdays for religious observances and they would, and other reasons. And they would like to see if we, if the town would consider, excuse me, on Sunday, having the same services provided. So basically, that's what this is about. And so we, we would need to amend the contract to provide the services being, uh, offered on, on Sundays as well. And so we wanted to bring it to council, get your interest level in doing that, and then obviously, we would bring back an amendment at some point.
Any comments?
Yes, I, I do have a question. Russell? Is there enough interest for I-9 to do this? I mean, they're the one running the program. So would there be enough interest for them to continue it on a Sunday? That takes a lot of, a lot of children playing to keep that program going.
For sure. And this is something that we believe is the case, uh, that the, the vendor is the one that brought this issue to our attention.
Okay.
So we believe that there is enough interest to support that. And certainly, we could, just like we do with any other service that we provide or any other programming that we provide, we can reevaluate in a few months. And if we see that the, the attendance isn't there, we can certainly make an adjustment.
Great.
And then for our residents, because Russell spoke a little bit, we have a very vibrant community that goes to Beth Emmett Temple on, on the corner of, uh, where was that? Griffin and Flamingo, sort of the corner. Um, and they're the ones who have also requested it for our residents who observe the Sabbath and cannot participate on Saturday.
Good. Good. So it sounds like the program is becoming more and more successful. When I drive past there, it's amazing how many kids are there. There's got to be three, four hundred people sometimes in the park there. So that's great. All righty.
Vice Mayor?
Before we conclude, if I can call December up, I just want to be able to make sure that I, there was nothing that I missed on that. I think the mayor has something.
Yeah. Uh, Steve, you want to go while December comes on up?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Appreciate it. I just want to say, uh, I, I do support, uh, this addition on Sunday. And, uh, just from an overall standpoint, I couldn't be more pleased, uh, with how the programs from I-9 are being run. I've, I've gone out there a couple Saturdays and, and watched and spoken to, uh, some of the folks out there. And it's really encouraging to see it taking off. Um, it is a variety of residents, both from in-town and outside of town. And I'm hoping that, uh, by going to Sunday, we'll be able to appeal to even more people in town. So, um, I'm excited about the expansion. I'm super excited about how I can see it's starting to kind of build an identity for our town and, um, couldn't be more pleased to see it expanding. So, thank you.
Great. December?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to, um, I'm December Lauratano-Haines, the Parks Director for Southwest Ranches. And I did bring this item as a discussion at our last meeting of the Recreation, Forestry, and Natural Resources Advisory Board, who recommended that we, um, allow this program to, what, that we recommend to you to allow this program to begin in the fall. And the, um, I-9 contractor has requested to be able to start publicizing so that he can round up, you know, the students to come in the fall. So this would begin in the October programs.